Okay, we'll call the Board of Education meeting for two minutes.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Who would approve the agenda of July 21st, 2015 regular meeting?
Second. Motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Next we have the approval of the consent of geniuses.
I'm moved to approve the consent of geniuses presented.
Second.
The motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Next we have public criticism. No. Okay, we move on to the board of commissioners, faculty and teachers.
Ah, yes, we'll start with notes of appreciation and I just want to personally say how much Angela and I and the rest of the family appreciated the acts of kindness by faculty and staff, by the administration and by the Board of Education when my mother passed away here three weeks ago. So, I was greatly appreciated and certainly wasn't impressed. Thank you. Bond issue project update, there's not a lot that has gone on with bond issue. They have made some progress on the HVAC equipment. They've also made progress on the energy management, energy control that is being installed. You may have noticed when you pulled in tonight that the sidewalk, as far as the sidewalk itself, is basically finished. They still have some landscaping work to do and some asphalt repair to do. They're still working on the railing down the end next to the path where that drop off is. But I really wanted to show our appreciation to wholesome and the other partners that worked with them to make all of that happen and in particular the project manager, Y'all Hunter. So, I think it turned out really nice. I talked to him and he was sweeping and shoveling the other night and stopped to talk to him for a while and, you know, just feel like he's kind of gone above and beyond to make that happen for us. And he assured me that when they got all the information together on everybody that helped out because it wasn't just wholesome, it was the guys that did the labor on extra four, four and a sidewalk and a variety of other entities, you know, here in the community. That all the information would go on site and sign at a place. Everybody decided that they recognized all this stuff. So, we're excited about that. Making some progress, I talked to Mr. Prom with K RJ. They made some progress on putting together RFP for the major portion of the bidding that will go out probably in October. It's probably be open at the November board meeting on the remainder of the projects that we don't have finished at this place or at this time. And then still working on putting together some information for wall field improvements and those kinds of things. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. So, as far as the bond issue goes, as far as the projects associated with bond issue goes, I think things are progressing in the way that we thought they were. The 2015 school tax rate hearing will be August 18th, just prior to the regular Board of Education meeting at 17:00. I received the preliminary assess valuation from the assessor's office and once it goes through before the equalization, then I'll have updated and complete the tax forms. Just kind of as a reminder of the process, once we have that information, it goes through the state auditor's office. They review everything and certify that the rate that is proposed is the accuracy rate for the school year. So, we'll begin that process as soon as we get the final assess valuation after it's sponsored with the board in possession, which should be sent usually to our personal office. Employee evaluation review, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Flea, she's going to talk about that.
This is just a review to kind of familiarize you with the processes that we use to evaluate our employees. So, I'll start with our building administrators, our principals, assistant principals and our athletic director. And what you have here, and I'm just going to do a quick summary. You have the specific evaluation pieces and I will talk about some of those. But I thought these would be a quick reference for you. If you want to review it at a later date, then you can ask questions. But you have a principal's evaluation form packet, a certified staff, which would be our teachers, counselors, librarians, and then you have a non-certified staff, secretaries, housekeeping, custodians and so on. So, I'll start with the administrators. All administrators are evaluated every school year. We use the DESI model for principal evaluations and we have modified that. We actually began that process last year during the 14-15 school year. So, I worked with the principals at the beginning of the year and we looked at what DESI had put out and changed the forms up just a little bit, but still followed the same format and seeked the same information that DESI requires, just kind of made it our own. So, every year, each building principal administrator has to develop a professional growth plan. One of their goals is set by me, because I'm their evaluator, as a district level goal. Last year the goal was to work on our mission, vision of value statements and so we didn't finish that goal, so we'll continue to work on that, look at the district mission and see if that can be improved and if we need to change it, we'll do that with the committee this year. Parents, students, community members, so we're going to continue to work on that. Two of their professional growth plan, two of their professional goals and their growth plan are set by them and they relate that to their building, what they would like to improve and work on in their building. And then the fourth one is set as a personal goal. It may be to work on an advanced degree, seek more professional development. It just kind of depends and varies by person. It is something that they want to work on themselves to improve how they're doing in their building. All principals have a formative evaluation. I use this kind of a self-assessment tool in the mid-year and they fill it out and come to me and then I provide input and we talk about what they think is going well and what needs to be improved upon and I operate on it. Their summative is completed by me at the end of the year. We sit down, we look at everything and we talk about how they felt the year went. So, you do have a copy of the formative and summative. And then they're required to keep a professional development log every year. DESI requires administrators to log 120 hours of professional development every four years. So, we track that and they keep track of it. And then all certified teachers and principals, counselors turn in their professional development hours to me in like the summative sheet. So, I keep those in case where I'm going to ask questions like how many hours did Mr. Taylor have? So, I keep those just as a reference. For the certified staff, teachers who are in their first, second, third, fourth or fifth year of teaching are evaluated every year. Teachers who are in year six and beyond are evaluated every three years with the formal evaluation process. For the certified staff members, we use the University of Missouri Columbia system. They call it the ME system, Network of Educators Effectiveness. We've been using this system, I guess, for about five years and it seems to go very well. Teachers are comfortable with it. So, during their official evaluation year, they need to complete a pre-observation worksheet, which is in your packet. They have a formative evaluation and a summative evaluation. Now, I don't have copies in there for you because this is a form that is generated out of the ME system. So, if I gave you a copy, it would have somebody's name, so I could bring that and show that to you at a later date. But that form is generated based on the walkthroughs and the observations that you and those that you're looking for. All staff members, whether they're being officially evaluated or they're in the non-evaluation year, do have walkthrough evaluations where the principals will go in and just do a quick snapshot and see what's going on and what they put into the system. And then that information we communicate every year, so when you get to year three for a 10-year teacher, all of that data is there that we have back to you. So, all teachers do have walkthroughs to have to do, just to kind of check the progress of learning and instruction in that classroom. All certified staff must do a professional development plan and there are two versions of this. You have a pre-improvementation form, which answers the first five questions in the professional development plan. That is done either at the end of the school year, April, May, sometimes in June, or at the beginning of the school year. So, those are done right away to prepare for the school year. And then at the end of the school year is the second piece of it where it answers five more questions, six to 10. So, there's a second component to that professional development plan. They have to complete a faculty profile and as part of that, they also have to log their professional development hours. Certified staff members are required by DESI to accumulate 30 professional development hours over four years. So, that's a little bit different. So, we go ahead and like I said, I track those too and have that information. They're required to keep a communication log when they contact parents, whether it's by email or phone call or they get stopped in the store and they have a conversation about progress and the parent brings it up, they go ahead and record all of that. And new for this coming school year, 2015-16, we're going to implement student learning objective, which is a measurement of learning over a period of time. It's a little confusing, but it is something that the teachers are going to work with in their collaborative groups to develop and track and they decide what that measurement is going to be because it eventually will become a part of their evaluation of the score. Not this year, but it's coming. So, we're going to work on that this year. The teachers actually started working with Mr. Mercer, Mrs. Giesler, Mrs. Diesel last year. They went to all the trainings and came back and started doing little trainings here and there with all staff members. So, they've already started that process. We have a form. They've been asked some questions, so we'll all work through that process right off, right off, by our gate. So, in the August end service, we'll have the principals to work with and the teachers to start that process. And then we get to the non-certified staff. They're similar to the certified staff. If they're in years one, two, three, four or five, they're evaluated every year. In year six and beyond, it's every three years. We use a district created form for non-certified and the one that I gave you, I think, just says classified, but there are other versions of that form. You have a parent's, teacher's evaluation form, but they're all very similar to this. During an evaluation year, they have a formative and a summative evaluation and in their non-evaluation year, we document as indeed should they do this. So, even though they're not officially being evaluated, they kind of do. So, that's just, I know it's a little confusing, but that's just a quick summary of our evaluation process. There are many pieces and components to ensure that our students are receiving quality services to learn. So, like I said, I gave you some of the forms and if you have questions, please call me when you know, we can just quickly discuss.
Okay. Thanks, too. If nothing else, we'll move on to unfinished business. Yep.
It isn't that.
And we'll move on to the ME business first, because the food stuff is big.
Ah, yes, you have in your packet the bid summary sheets annually. We solicit bids for bread and milk. This year we had, we had two bids on the bread and we had one bid on the milk. You can see the recommendation that's there in the motion. You might note that the bid for bread from Flowers Baking Company is on sandwich bread, it was 19 cents cheaper and on little hot dog hamburger bunch was 65 cents cheaper than what the other bid was, which is also the same amount, the work ground. So, a significant decrease in the bread bids. And then the milk, we received one bid from Prairie Farms Dairy and that is actually a penny cheaper per half pint for both kinds. So, I would recommend that you accept those bids.
I make that motion to accept those bids for this year.
Motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye. Next, we have the pest control bids.
Ah, yes, we have two bids for pest control. We have a bid from Orkin that was a one-year bid at $268 per month. And we had a three-year bid from Camerons at $110 per month. We are currently with Camerons. I would recommend that you accept the three-year bid from Camerons at $110 per month.
I move to accept the following bid for the 2015-16, 16-17 and 17-18 school.
Okay. Motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye. Next, we have the addition of the early childhood special education teaching position at St. John's Elementary.
And at this point, I'm going to defer to Dr. Green.
Hello. Based on numbers from the 2014-15 school year of our child count of students that we serve in early childhood special ed, DESI would support the hire of a full-time teacher for this upcoming school year. Also, considering the severity of the disabilities, I think that's appropriate for us, so it would be fully reimbursed. So, I would recommend the hiring of a full-time special education teacher for early childhood.
Is that a 7C?
No, 7C, yes.
I move to approve the addition of the early child specialist, early child special education teaching position at St. John's Elementary.
Second.
The motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Is that paid at 100% until we don't need that position anymore or just?
Basically funded one year over years.
Oh, okay.
So, we're funded for actual expense over the years, as long as our case goes, supports it, looks it does.
Yes, we have the approval of the preschool programs at St. John's Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary.
We were excited to learn that we received both grants and obviously Dr. Green and Dr. Flea spent a lot of time working on those grants and getting them submitted, so they deserve a lot of credit for putting together a grant, two grant applications that were worthy of funding. I'm going to turn it over to them to kind of talk about the program, give some information regarding the timeline and just kind of talk through the process and then at the end of that, hopefully you all will move to begin the programs and to accept the funding to the early preschool program.
So, we are thrilled about both grants. We will have one at the St. John's Elementary as well as one at Bloomsdale Elementary. What we know is that we will have 40 slots available, 20 at each site. We would like for the first year for there to be 10 slots reserved in each site for students who would qualify for free reduced lunch and then the other 10 slots would be full paid tuition. They encourage us to start tuition now, even though it's a funding program at this point because after four years of renewal, so a total of five years, the money is supposed to run out. So, we need to be able to be sustainable by the end of that. When we had our community advisory committee meetings, that was one of the goals that we had set, was that it would be sustainable after the grant had expired. So, with that being said, we are looking at full day programs, Monday through Friday, breakfast, lunch and PM snack while there attending will be included in the fee. For the slot, for those who qualify for the sliding scale fee, the free families, well, families who qualify for free reduced lunches will attend free. Those who are reduced will eat $10 a day and those who do not qualify for assistance will be full paid tuition, which is $20 a day. So, $100, $100 will eat to the full paid tuition. For this year, the child needs to have turned three by August 1st of 2015. We are hoping to hire two lead teachers tonight. August 17th, we would like for applications to be available for the preschool program, so that's where the families can come and get that initial application so that they're a part of the lottery process. August 18th, we would like to hire two preschool teaching assistants. September 10th, we're wanting to do the lottery so that families can be notified on the 10th and the 11th. And then the 30th, we would like to have an open house and attended start date for the students at October 5th. So, that's almost a month before we're required to actually have it open. So, we're working as quickly on this with the, we found out July 13th that we were awarded the grant and we were supposed to find out July 1st, so we're knocking it out. Do you have any questions?
I saw Dr. Flea up there, but we can't get that measure in and stuff. Guys, you know, we're not exciting. We've tried for years to get a preschool and you guys are amazing with what you do to do. Thank you for all.
Thank you.
Your hard work.
I'm 100% for the, I was going to ask why it was going to be October 5th, but then you explained how that all going to roll out. The other question is, can you refresh my memory as to where the rooms at?
Yes, there is a room available across from the early childhood special ed and the addition here at St. John's Elementary. And at Bloomsdale Elementary, where the counselor's office previously was, is already set up for a preschool classroom, as far as the sizes and the things that are stuffed in the room. So, we'll be going there.
Yeah, thank you. August 17th, absolutely ready on August 17th.
That is the goal, yes.
And make it those at the schools.
We're not sure yet.
Okay. Online or via, off the hill?
Well, it's part of, part of the reason we really don't have a whole lot of direction in the research right now is, you know, we have to hire the teachers first and we have to really start going through this developing the application because we don't have that. We have to develop the parent advisory committee to really guide some of the questions and help set up the handbook again to help make some of these decisions, so.
Also, the follow-up post-award meeting isn't until this Thursday, so we're assuming that we'll find out more information as well, but we just want to continue with the parent advisory committee until we can bring teachers where it's better than.
So, right now here, it's just handlers, staff.
Right, the best they can. We know everybody's excited and we're happy for that.
Yeah, everybody's.
And as, as soon as we know, we're going to put out another news release, put, post it on our website and put it in the paper and the local newspaper, so just hang on.
And once things are successful this year, things can grow in years to come.
Potentially.
Potentially.
You know, anytime that you get a significant grant award like that, whether it be from state sources or from federal sources, there's a variety of strings attached to it. And at this point, we still don't know what the strings are completely. We have the post-award meeting on Thursday, so we'll learn some there. But the program is really designed to take community input and as a part of that guise ring committee process. And so, you know, it almost sounds like, well, why is it October 5th before you're going to get this thing off the ground? You have to realize that we just found out a week ago that we were starting the program, so it's going to take a little while just to get the staffing in place. You've got, you have to get supplies ordered, you have to get the classrooms set up. So, there's, there's a whole string of things. Plus, we have licensure hoops that we have to jump through as well. So, there's a lot of work to be done before we open the doors and invite, invite kids in on October 5th. We are really excited about, about the programs, really excited that we got both grants, so we can have them at both elementary. And we're excited about the opportunities that it will provide for our, for our students and for our parents. So, we're, you know, we just, we think that early childhood education is just so important to developing those skills early and we feel like this will benefit not only for the student but for the district as well. So, we're, we're excited about it.
Look, we got an issue of, we have to have all 20 slots filled by, we start our, which is not, you know, a lot of people got care, they need to know where their kids go in the fall, so we'll have to sleep. We'll have to start off a little slow, we got teachers hired and.
We're committed for a year anyway.
Yeah.
Recruit, recruit, recruit. Always recruiting. If we don't have a slot filled, we need to seek out families that can, well, another thing we can do is have the parent advisory committee meet if our slots need to be changed. We, we want to try to have at least 25% free, free and reduced. So, you know, right now we're shooting for 50. But I'm, we could alter that if we had to. I don't think it'll be an issue to fill it, but yeah, we would just keep recruiting and then they'll do a child count in February. At that time, if we don't have, on that particular day, if we don't have all 20 slots filled, that's whenever we may not get as much funding.
So, we have to until February 4th.
Yeah. I think I'll be three in the office first, so some kids could be in there for two years.
I was looking at that when I heard about it, I couldn't, I expected to have a waiting list. And I could be wrong, but I used to, I used to have waiting lists.
We'll, we'll see.
Yeah, there are daycares, I can be both.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, areas with waiting lists, so. We're trying to run all scenarios too. Just trying to troubleshoot like, what if this, what if that? So, there are a lot of unanswered questions, but those are the things that we do know and shooting for.
We'll open a house, the, that's probably not just for people who are new, but anybody who wants to come and check it out and check it out.
Yeah, I think we could do that because there, there might be, there might be parents that have, have children that, you know, might be interested for the following year or maybe are on a waiting list that would like to attend and just see what it's all about. So, yeah, I think it'd be open to the public.
Oh, would I get 30, you should.
How many?
30.
Just 30 more.
Wow, that's pretty good. All right.
Thank you ladies, I was excited to get that email back.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'll move to approve preschool program except the MPP funding at St. John's Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye. Opposed? Motion against. Okay, next, we have the addition of two preschool lead teacher positions.
Ah, yes, those are the lead teacher positions at the two programs that you just approved. Those positions do require 10 days of extended contract, because they have a work aspect that goes along with the preschool programs. So, I would recommend that you add those, add those two positions.
Move to approve the addition of two preschool lead teacher positions for the 2015 six-year.
And motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Next, we have the addition of two preschool teacher assistant positions.
Yes, the grant funding in each case and the requirements of the grant would have us have a teacher assistant in both programs. So, I would recommend that you add those positions as well. Be filled probably in August 4th.
Move to approve the addition of two preschool teacher assistant positions for the 15-6 school year.
The second. Motion in the second, I'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion against. Okay. Okay. Would you sign it?
Okay. I move that the Board of Education, over the closing meeting, with the closing record, the closing vote, calling the ring of peace in the knock, eighteen, 2015, to be held in the Art and Empathy Conference Library, 715 Washington Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting on the following items. Legal action, causes of action, or litigation. Leads, purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding, or aboning for daycare employees. Proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual. Scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals. Testing and examination materials. Well-fer cases of identifiable individuals. Preparation for negotiation with employee groups. Software code for electronic data processing and documentation thereof. Specifications for competitive bidding until approved or published. Sealed bids and related documents until bids are opened. Sealed bids, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected. Any documents related to a negotiated contract that are not contract as executed. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance rating, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Records protected from disclosure by law. Scientific and technological innovations in which the owner has proprietary owns. Records related to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and wrongdoing. Continental privilege communication with an auditor. Operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident. Existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property. A portion of a record that identifies security system or access codes. Records identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful construction and configuration of components or operation of computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network. Credit card numbers, personal identification number, digital certificate, physical and virtual keys, access code, or authorization codes that are used for tech, electronic, transactives. I further move the notice of this meeting and the intended agenda being posted as required by law. Sir.
Have a motion in the second, roll call, Eric Bowser?
Yes.
Ian Boma?
Yes.
Connor Crowder?
Yes.
Tom Banzey?
Yes.
Eric McDaniel, yes, Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Rick Brulow?
Yes.
Motion carries seven over.
I need to go to both sessions with closed record and closed vote after a short break.
Sure.
A motion in the second, I'm prepared. Oppose, motion carries.